Copy of the opening act is posted on the wall of your office. Coming to the door of the road building, where the mic and one of them. This being is being recorded. If your president wishes to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address. It's being directed towards the microphone the entire time we address the government body. We also have some speakers or interested individuals joining the meeting by video teleconference. Using the Zoom platform, ask publicists to remain in notification. Hearing our Zoom audience, please keep the microphone muted for those who are wanting to comment, please, as you follow. Those joining us via the Zoom app or through your computer, please click on the raise hand button. For those joining us through the call or as a teacher, please press 1 on. This will require a moderator, Mr. Ray Alves, who we have a comment in one of our virtual meetings. And he will let me know if you want to speak. I will definitely have that in the future. When you speak, also, please state your name and address. Please zoom for the second meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No comments?
Commissioner Soski?
President.
Commissioner Wayland?
President.
Commissioner Cheney?
President.
Commissioner Sharp?
President.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. There are two items on our present safety. First is script minutes from July twenty first, twenty twenty five, starting Friday, and this morning, with the Turk providing in this quarter, seven minutes, and to appear in court of due time, including requisition, Friday, September, period of July eighth, twenty twenty five, July first, twenty nine. You're right, Commissioner White, about the provision of the time of week, passing of work, this event.
Outside.
No comments?
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. Move on to appointments and announcements. First is a library board appointment, actually, three reappointments. First, I'm ready for the appointment of Amy Collin to fill the position that was left by Sue Little, who finished her term on the course of July. Appreciate Sue's work. Amy is a nineteen ninety nine graduate of Nebraska City High School. She has a degree in education from Brooklyn Lutheran College, and a master's in cultural development from Dillon College. She's entering her twenty twenty second, twenty second year of teaching. Apparently, the title one leading teacher at Gabriel Elementary. So she's a senior at Ballotony Library Board. Morton James Library has been a special place for her and her family, and she used to live there during the summers. And she was in the schools. And bringing her appointment, that will go from the first of July, twenty five, to first of July, twenty nine. Following her reappointments, she recently freed her current terms. She's been in for seven terms. She ends this July. A reappointment will take her out to July twenty nine. Nikki Johnson, Anne Lajak Malakowski have been serving on the board. And she had done reappointments on the twenty four, and then serving. And this reappointment will take them out to July twenty five. So this time, I move forward, at one point, Amy Collin, reappointments, which recently freed Susan Johnson.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Rob Schreiner, fire chief of Nebraska City in Nebraska. This time, I'd like to introduce, which a lot of people probably know, Robert Earl, who's worked for us for
Nine years?
Worked for quite a while. Robert, we've told you, we're an engineer that we have right now. We've kind of upped our game a little bit because Robert still has his medic license. We've already had him tested in the fire, and he did well. So this time, I'd like to interview Robert Earl. And then, Robert.
Thank you.
Good to have you back. Commissioner Soski?
Commissioner?
Unfortunately, we don't have the gold watch for this event, but Jeff can.
I don't want to make him start crying, but this is his last city council meeting. As the general manager of the utilities, he may come back for fun.
Who keeps moving?
All the way from Biakros. Jeff has been with us for forty-one years in the utilities. I think he came straight from your graduation prestate. Pretty close, reverse. So he worked his way up through utilities, all the way up to being our general manager, which he's been since twenty eighteen. I'd say as general manager, it's been great to have him there. Some of the phone calls. It's always fine with Jeff. He always starts off with, sorry to bother you, mayor, but. So you always. So I always know that it's something that he really tried to take care of himself for trying to do that. He usually is just a signature or something that we have good to state for. He's done a great job as general manager. He's also done a lot of other things in the community. He has served on several boards. He's been acting in Rotary. He's been on the Nebraska City Area Economic Development Board. And he has also has just about as much time as what you got the utilities is with our volunteer fire department. So he's served as a captain. And he has also served as a secretary for fifteen years. He's been a great asset in the city, and I think he'll hopefully stay here and continue to be a great asset. He's been a sage voice, calm voice. And he's always given me great guidance, and he's always been able to take the very tactical issues and make them simple enough that an army guy can understand. I appreciate all your work and all your contributions, Jeff, and all the years that you've given to Nebraska City. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm sure, and why don't you make him go to party?
Something's in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, move on to reports. First, we have the President's local report on the city, and we tell you the current situation.
President's report, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Total city funds, ten million, nine hundred eighty, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and thirteen cents. Total utility funds, ten million, nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred sixty dollars and twenty-four cents. Total city and utility funds combined, twenty-one, twenty-one million, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Down on the back of our general fund, the unrestricted fund balance, council has a resolution trying to keep thirty-five percent reserved. And we're supposed to keep thirty-five percent of the coming year without any further revenue. Unfortunately, we're below that, at about twenty-eight percent. So six hundred thousand dollars short of what we might have reserves, which we'll be looking at as for many budget reasons, however. That's true, as of the end of the third quarter, it's going to be June thirtieth. Do you have any questions?
Move on to city administrators' monthly report, departmental activity, and our staff.
As Mayor mentioned, we began our budget sessions today. Continue those through Thursday. Lots of challenges. Staff have been working really hard on their budgets. I greatly appreciate that. And so we'll keep everybody posted on how those are going. Just a quick update on our website, the new website. We did the, we began the content migration. So we're moving right along, on schedule. We've had a few meetings online with them. Again, I know Commissioner Revis has done a great job communicating with us. We get something about every day. They have questions for us. We get back to them and working through. Just the layout and content was pretty seamless, pretty easy to get through. So anticipate that that content migration will go well. For the budget, we are seventy-five percent through, so we're going into our final quarter. Right now, the expenditure side, we're just right around sixty-six, sixty-seven percent, which is good. Revenue side is, you know, it shows less than sixty, but a lot of revenues are, gets come in. Some of our larger revenues, with a sales tax, property tax. So if that looks a little low, it's, it's a little misleading. Sales taxes have a level off from previous years, but we think we're still on track to meet our budget, what we targeted from last year. On some, just the individual line items, there's nothing really that jumps out. If you look at, I believe it's EMS and fire, a little higher on the salary line items because we've got to do quite a bit of training. You know, that Chief Schreiner alluded to. That was part of the issue, is having an injury. When you have gaps in staff, you have people pulling sometimes double duty, and so there's a lot of overtime. And then when you rehire staff or training, and so we've seen a lot of that. But we're, we're almost full staff now. We did, or will be doing a follow-up interview in EMS prepared medical. But we have hired quite a few part-timers that have done outstanding job to fill in some of the gaps. And so we get that full-time position taken care of. And most of the equipment purchases are done, and we did send a check for the down payment on the remodel. I believe we took care of one of the monitors as well with money that we had watching in this year. Other than that, any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Council now acknowledged the city utility financial report compared in the day from the first twenty five. Acknowledged the city utility plan compared in the June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. How long has general manager kept personnel? New general manager, John Wolf, is also. Fireable. Any questions?
Move on to new business. First item number ten, discussion slash action regarding the Cardill odor. Carrie and I met with Cardill today. They said that NDE was out until Friday with their sniffer. Also looking at the anaerobic side, looking at who's getting samples. They were looking for specific.
Could you speak up, please?
Is that any better?
Thanks so much.
Your pleasure. Thank you for that. Carrie and I met with Cardill today, again. And they said that NDE goes out Tuesday and Friday with their sniffer, and their anaerobic lagoon. They were looking for N two H. I'm not a chemist, so I. They found some trace amounts of N two H or concern or impact to help. They are meeting here, our local plant manager and his boss at operations, of which Todd is meeting with corporate weekly to discuss the short-term solution and the long-term. Short-term being renewing the sludge in the aerobic anaerobic lagoon without having to remove the tarp. As far as that goes, they did see an indication, they have seen indications in the lagoon of slowly increasing biogas, which is a great sign. They're continuing to bring in sludge from Skyworth that has the good life bugs with it, and using neutralizer to also try and bring down the clot in the old sludge that was urinating. On the short-term, they're also continuing to look at avenues that they can get in and take out old sludge without removing the tarp. They've taken out everything thus far, that was easy to get to. Now they're looking at other access points or some way to get into the lagoon to take out old sludge and make it go faster. The local manager believes sometime, hopefully within the next month, month and a half, they'll come to a decision if they have to go to the tarp removal for a short-term fix. How removing the tarp, short. If they wind up doing that, it will probably be an increase for a period of the smell. Because once they remove the tarp, the smell will obviously increase. They will have to be running everything through a secondary system or equipment that they would have to bring on-site. And they would have to actually evacuate or clean the entire lagoon, seal it, and then start growing bugs again in it to get the process going again. So that's what they're looking at as far as the short-term. We continue to work with contractors to look at the long-term solutions for how they can build the system better and do a capital improvement that we wouldn't keep running into this issue, and that it would be a better system. They've been really careful with their advising contractors on making sure no more clots is going in through any chemicals as far as sanitation, or any kind of cleaning materials. And they're also increasing their dosing meters on everything that goes out for the lagoon and running that at a much higher level of inspection than they have in practice. In the last two weeks, I've done a couple of conversations with our city physician, Dr. Brad Bassett, after last meeting. Couple of people that I know in the medical field have brought concerns about headaches, nausea, and all of that. So I spoke with Dr. Bassett. He went to the NDE website, all the reports that he'd looked at, all the NDE, spoke with them, and also spoke with other public health officials. And what he's saying in the reports, it is well, it's moddersome. It's not what would be considered a public health risk. But he's not saying that it can cause, the smell and the odor itself can cause nausea, headaches, and all that. But as far as being a chemical health hazard, it's not rising to that level. But he's going to, I'm going to continue to keep Brad and more, Dr. Bassett. He will continue to read all the materials that come out of NDE. And he's going to work with Perry and I to keep track there, as well as our city physician. Last update that I had with you halfway through the last couple of weeks. So it's still going to be a very slow, ongoing process. We're trying to get good sludge in, to increase the biogas, and hopefully neutralize the clots that city, old sludge, and hopefully they'll find a way to get all of that out to try and get the process going. So anybody who would like to comment or have questions that I can either pass on to Cardill, speak with Cardill, or you would just like to address this in the system?
Dean General, five percent, Carol Stride. I guess the question I have, hydrogen sulfate at the levels that were recorded were highly toxic, according to the information that I have, and Duane will probably speak a little more on that. And also, the federal EPA asked, they refer to have the lagoons cleaned completely out every five to ten years. And as to my knowledge, I don't think they've ever been cleaned. So yes, it is getting better, but also, I never heard anything about the aeration that the diffusers are not working correctly on the aeration pump. So that's an issue that I believe needs to be addressed.
Okay, on your first point, the levels were highly toxic. Where did you read that?
It was on some EPA stuff. And it's over nine point four particle million of hydrogen sulfate.
Were these recent numbers, Dean, or was this?
That was on, I believe, June the twenty-fifth.
Okay, EPA taking a sense in yet?
That was Nebraska Department of Environmental Energy. And they measured on the north side of the, of the aerobic pond and, and southerly breeze at that time. Did register as high at nine point four particle million.
Okay. All right, the best that happens is to be in contact with the NDE, and they've always said that.
That's all I have to do, question for you.
The federal EPA, five to ten years, are you signing a document on that?
Uh, that was a document. I do have that with me. And I could probably give it there.
On the EPA's website, or?
Yes, if, if it's on federal EPA. They recommend reading them out every five to ten years.
Jeff?
Well, I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Rick Schallerberger, sixteen oh five, Fifth Corso, and twenty twelve with Indus Drive. Last time I spoke, I missed code. Sorry about that. I said they did testing fiber, it was Don King, and he passed away in twenty fifteen, which was ten years ago. And he didn't do an testing then. So they've been testing that for a lot longer than five years, way before the pandemic, he was having problems. Another thing I'd like to ask, you might ask him out there, is last time Cardill had their professionals here, they were getting a temporary permanent solution, which was they put a mister all the way around the lagoons. Why haven't they even turned it all back on? I know they shut them off for freezing, but they haven't turned it back on. And it was keeping down some of the smell. So you might want to ask him about that.
I briefly mentioned that in one of our meetings, and there's, was there was. And that they believe it had negative blowing impact on this.
Well, the misters are on top of the fence. And what they're dealing with. Did help a little bit. Anything helping, I think they'd be into.
We can ask him again.
Okay. Thank you.
I know we talked about, and they said it was negative blowing impact on the
Like I said, if it does any good, it'd be worth it.
Now, we, I think, when we receive a copy of the letter that we have sent to Cardill?
No, I have not. Yeah, we, the letter, I can, I can give that to you now. I just want to confirm, eight, receive the letter. So now that I'm just confirming that, I can get that to whoever wants the letter. So that is, that has been received, so it's.
Okay, do you have copies?
I apologize. I don't have it with me in the meeting right now. As soon as I get back to my house, I'll email it.
Anybody else want to talk to Steve Wayland?
Duane Stewart, twenty four oh one, four oh four seven. I'm going to hand out some copies. This is the NDE website. I'm sure maybe somebody has seen this, maybe somebody who has not. This is basically a communication link between NDE and Cardill. This is public information. I'm going to leave copies here for whoever wants to copy. On this website, it basically gets you access to the, like I said, the communication link between Cardill and NDE. You have to know the number, look at decoder ring, six two five zero four. When you enter that number, it's going to bring up the history of the communications between Cardill and NDE. I'm not sure, does this look familiar to anybody on the panel? I'm not sure. I'm sure back there, I think it looks familiar. Uh, Quinn?
I don't know if we did this level. I know we did all the reports.
Yeah.
I've seen it, right? I think the last time I had problems with the number, I just went straight to their interactive map and typed in Cardill. So that's how I accessed it.
I mean, this is public information. You go to that website, you go to the NDE website, and you drill in, and you get this, you enter that number, and it goes back thirty years. Now granted, a lot of this communication is just a correspondence between, for license requests, and they do annual or periodic inspections and stuff. But you go back thirty years, and there's over four hundred and forty entries. The last five years, there's a hundred and sixty entries. And if you can look through the list, granted, there's, you open up the file, and it brings up a twenty-page document. So if you're going to look at every one, you're going to be looking at it for days. But if you can look at the titles, and the titles, it's very easy to find several that are titled non-compliance and complaint. And if you just do the math, that's the last five years, that's one entry every eleven days. And like I said, not every entry is a complaint or a non-compliance, but they're easy to find. So with that, you know, I, I hear a lot of, you know, statements that Cardill does good things. Cardill is an advocate for the community. But when you look at this, these reports, it becomes very questionable on some of their ethics with running the business. One of the items is on June fifth of this year, twenty twenty five. It was during the time period when their main pipe, I'm going to call it, from their lift station to the aerobic lagoon became so clogged that they lost that flow. So they created a bypass pipe, made out of PVC to reestablish that flow. And I believe the day is on June fifth, that pipe broke. And basically, I'm going to, basically, lack better words, they contaminated that site. They had to file a report, and they had to do all sorts of cleanup efforts because of that pipe break. One of the correspondence letters between NDE and Cardill basically was a statement saying, asking Cardill if Nebraska City was notified of the event and the odor that was going to be prevalent for the next several days. I'm not sure if that communication made it to this panel here. But reading that letter alone, after that incident, Cardill knew it was going to be a stinkfest for multiple days, and they were, the state in Nebraska was trying to communicate to Cardill, saying, hey, you better let Nebraska City know this was going on. And to my knowledge, I wasn't aware of any event or anything like that, so again, that just raises the question of the integrity of Cardill's interaction with the Nebraska City public, in my opinion. Last meeting, we requested, and I think the previous meeting before that, if Cardill would be present at the meeting. I'm not sure if Cardill's present. Cardill, raise your hand. No hands. I'm assuming that Cardill was invited again for this meeting. I'm not sure.
They informed this meeting, they informed that it's going to be on each other.
Yeah.
Definitely, whatever they call it.
Okay. Again, that, to me, sends messages of their willingness to cooperate. You know, this becomes a topic of discussion with, you know, a lot of people. And I was just talking to an individual, their family, I just mentioned in passing, you know, hey, you know, talk about the Cardill smell. And they said, oh, yeah, we're aware of it. They live near Saint Mary's Church, which is on Sixth Street and First Avenue, right? That's a long way. I don't, I didn't map it out, but that's a long way from Cardill, and they could smell it at their house. And I asked them, I said, gosh, it'd be great if you could, you know, come to the city council meeting and just, just be here, you know, voice your opinion. And then they basically said, you know, no, 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 that, that's not, they're, they're not comfortable with coming to the meeting and voicing their opinion. So I said at the last meeting, a lot of people out there that are concerned about this and quite honestly upset, but yet, for whatever reason, job, kids, life, they're not comfortable coming here and discussing it. So there's a, a big voice out there that is silent, and I just wanna express that. And then my last question, I guess, is, um, you know, hopefully we get to a point where Cargill gets this fixed. But my question to you is, you know, as a parent, you have to think about, what is, what's success? What is, what do we call a victory? You know, is it two months without any odor, or is it six months? A year, hopefully it's longer than that? Let's say it gets fixed, and we, we're going along, all sorts of happiness, and butterflies, and sunshine, and then two years, and then, here we are. I think this panel needs to have discussions and have a plan for when this does get fixed. Don't assume it's gonna last forever. Assume this problem is gonna reoccur within maybe two years, or maybe five years, I don't know. But have a plan, I want the action is gonna be to resolve it, because when the problem does reoccur, we do not wanna sit here for another six months to get it fixed. And again, I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm gonna say it again. You know, I know, I know a lot, certainly individuals, it's nothing personal, please. I'm not attacking individuals here. As a representative of the community, we want the problem fixed. So that's the last.
Bernastis, two one one five, Second Corso. Um, I would ask that they expand their monitoring beyond hydrogen sulfide and include volatile fatty acids. They can probably find that a lot of the odors come from that. Um, and see what we get there. Thank you.
Volatile fatty acid?
Yes.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? To the short term? If they go around with not having to remove the tarp, it is gonna be in a matter of months. It's a big lagoon, and it's not happening fast. If they remove the tarp, it's gonna be in a matter of months and months, for probably one or two years. The long-term solution, which I
Say that, say that again?
If they have to remove the tarp and clean the lagoon, and then regrow all the sludge and all the bacteria and retarp it, it's gonna take time for that to build up again.
Right. Did I hear you say one to two years?
It could be a past one year.
I don't think they're being honest with you. I think there are other solutions. They might cost some money.
So far, I have not had a feeling that they're not being honest with us. And on their long-term solutions, they continue to give designs and contractors to fix it, so that, and just as you said, we're not here three or four years from now. And that is going to be a twenty to thirty billion dollar capital investment in our plan to keep the plan here. I recommend every council member go to that website, enter in that number, and look at the history of all the interactions between the NDE and Cargill. And the, the integrity becomes questionable. I've seen. A lot of reports don't read that, a lot of complaints, yes. A lot of problems with compliance ordering to involve state assets. As you know, you're getting close to compliance, and this is not a bad idea. To involve the state, and the state gets involved with a co- complaint, there's always gonna be a complaint issued from NDE, passed on to Cargill, responsible to Cargill. So yes, there is a lot of either, especially over the last five years. But from what I've seen, none of that has led me to question the ethics or integrity of the car. So anybody else who'd like to speak?
I do have the handout prepared, and.
Tim Morgan, twenty thirteen, Central Avenue. I have heard the report just a little bit ago, and I believe I, I could be misspoken, spoken, but if they take the tarp off, it was gonna be four, or a year, I'm sorry, a month, a month and a half of putting up with the smell. Now I just heard it was gonna be up to maybe two years. That was my question, is it a month and a half? Like the report said at the beginning of the meeting? Or are we looking at two years?
I don't know where you heard a month and a half, Tim. Taking off the tarp and removing all the sludge, and having basically bringing equipment to bypass that whole system to process it while they clean the lagoon, and then they would have to reseep the lagoon and build up, build up the, uh, bacteria and tear where it's producing bodily acid, taking it to various proteins and all of that. I don't know where you heard a month and a half.
That was when you mentioned, uh, when you were giving the Cargill report earlier.
I think within the next month and a half or two, they're gonna monitor whether what they're doing right now is going to lead them to a point that they can sustain the lagoon as it is right now. If they see enough improvement, that they don't have to go around peeling off the tarp. And hopefully they can make that decision what they're seeing within the next month and a half, two months.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd just speak or ask a question, or pass the law to you? Just one more thing. Um, we briefly discussed the, the citation that was recently issued to Cargill from the United States, we said in the letter.
Oh, there's just the letter, uh, that shows our ordinance? That are, and when you approached this before, you said, are they aware that they are violating ordinance? And
Right, just so everybody's
So in writing, so in writing, we sent in writing that what the ordinance is.
Right, Nebraska City has an ordinance in regards to, um, defensive orders. And I thought we agreed upon it, it was clear that Cargill was in violation of that ordinance. And my understanding was that the council was going to issue a
No, you're right.
A letter.
If I issued it myself, I don't. If I go around citations and litigation, what does Cargill do as far as keeping in contact with me and with Eric? Kind of our utilities on a daily basis? Eric and I speak to him as often. By week, Eric speaks to him every few days, and our utilities is in constant contact pretty much every day. Okay. If we cite and we litigate, do you think Cargill would be speaking to us? If I, as a business owner, I would not. The minute anybody tries to sue the city, I don't speak to them at all, because I don't wanna make
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about suing, I just think it was just an official citation that there's a city ordinance and that are in violation of that ordinance.
What do you think that's gonna run? Are you gonna pay a hundred dollars?
So the next time, the next time as a citizen, I violate an ordinance?
Is your hundred dollars a day to you versus a hundred dollars a day to them is a lot different?
I got a complaint by a police officer because I was blowing grass or, uh, leaf clippings on the road, and I was violating the city ordinance.
We're trying to do our best to work with them on a mutual level, with good back-and-forth rapport, without having to go that step. So we're trying to have communications open, keep it simple, and keep it as good as we can. Going to that route is not gonna help deescalate the situation. Unless we absolutely have to. Right now, we absolutely don't have to. If those are communicating and having good meetings with us, that's the direction we want to continue to go.
Okay, I'm sure.
And sure.
Well, they do have other situations where there are sightings where we're not leveraging the fines, as long as the individual is in violation, is showing that they're improving regulations.
Okay. I guess I would like to see how this, for the start.
That was just published.
I'll see if I can.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Thank you all for your input. Adam Martin, ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine dash twenty-five.
Ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine dash twenty-five, an ordinance to vacate the alley in block thirty-four, Anderson's Second Edition. Nebraska City, O'County, Nebraska, as described in section one here, out pending a effective date.
I move the statutory rule requiring a three-day suspension.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Mr. Soski?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. I declare the motion to adopt a modified vote of this vote in the council, with statutory rules suspended per consideration of said ordinance.
Ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine dash twenty-five, an ordinance to vacate the alley in block thirty-four, Anderson's Second Edition. Nebraska City, O'County, Nebraska, as described in section one here, out pending a effective date.
I move the final passage of ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine dash twenty-five.
Second motion.
Discussion? Anything else on this, Marty, please clarify your question?
Marty Stow, construction facility manager, so, yeah, Keith and I reviewed this and sent it over to, um, utilities, and nobody has any issues. Currently, it's just kinda maintain yard and trees. You really know how we're there, there's no utilities through it, but we do reserve the right to maintain, um, an alley. It'll just split ownership to each side, so we still reserve the right to go through their utilities someday if we need to.
I ask you all, ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine dash twenty-five.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Mr. Soski?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. The current ordinance thirty-one twenty-nine dash twenty-five adopted, shall sign the same, in presence of
I am twelve, discussion statutory approval of proposed half-season rate for golf course membership.
Uh, Tori Ward, um, as the step park director. Um, a few, probably a couple months ago, when the summer started, we had a lot more people come out to the golf course, and um, we had some interest in, um, people wanting to do memberships, but being halfway through, they asked if we had, um, mid-season rates. Um, that they would be interested in looking at that if we would go that route. And so I spoke with Nick and Pat, and kind of threw up, threw out that idea, and so we kind of, that's how we came here today to approve that and see if we could do that annually. Around July first, or who would like to do that every year, has set those dates. And I think that we went towards fifty percent of what our original, um, price is for. That's what we're here for, to say.
I don't know, I get hurt by mid-season, it might make more on charging every day.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed half-season rate for golf course memberships, and we get, uh, for every year going forward. July, July first.
I'll second. Motion to second through the discussion.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Soski?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Chaney.
This time I introduce ordinance thirty-one thirty-one dash twenty-five.
Ordinance thirty-one thirty-one twenty-five, an ordinance to amend section thirty-one dash thirty-four, thirty-one through thirty-four of the code of the city of Nebraska. The city of Nebraska related to restricted expenditures of the board of public works, revealing all other ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, approving publication in pencil form, and declaring effective date.
I look at the statutory rule requiring a three-day suspension. I'll second.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. I declare the motion to adopt a modified vote of this vote in the council, with statutory rules suspended per consideration of said ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-one dash twenty-five, an ordinance to amend section thirty-one through thirty-four of the code of the city of Nebraska, city of Nebraska, related to restricted expenditures of the board of public works, revealing all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, reviewing publication in pencil form, and declaring an effective date.
I move the final passage of ordinance thirty-one thirty-one dash twenty-five. Discussion? Four zero one five thousand?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Seventy-five, ninety-two. We have a discussion.
It's just a positive.
You know, with that being said, do we need to tell there's a policy that the city has of this five thousand dollar rule?
Correct? Do we need to review that maybe? How do you kill it if it's on seventy-five hundred and one, seven five ordinance?
Yes, but the city has a policy of this five thousand dollars. Do we, should we review that and appreciate that there's also
Right, on behalf of you. You want to, have I got my mark?
No, maybe tonight.
For the next Any further discussion? I ask you all, ordinance thirty-one thirty-one dash twenty-five, please pass it.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. I declare ordinance thirty-one thirty-one dash twenty-five. Adopted, and shall sign the same, in presence of the court of trial.
And this ordinance thirty-one thirty-dash twenty-five.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-dash twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the Nebraska City Code to add new sections related to utility applications and to establish rules and regulations regarding water and sewer service, to provide more penalties, to provide for the effective date, and to provide for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here.
I look at the statutory rule requiring a three-day, three-day suspension. I'll second.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. I declare the motion to adopt a modified vote of this in the council. So the statutory rule suspended per consideration of said ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-dash twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the Nebraska City Code and to add new sections related to utility applications and to establish rules and regulations regarding water and sewer service, to provide the penalty, to provide the effective date, to provide for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here.
I move for final passage of ordinance thirty-one thirty-dash twenty-five. I'll second. Discussion? Want to explain a little bit?
Brian Turner, twenty nineteen, Second Avenue, Nebraska City Utilities. Uh, this ordinance doesn't really change, it doesn't change what the policy was before, it clarifies it. Uh, anytime you would look in, we'd have to look through the ordinance to validate what we were asking the customer. Anytime you would look in, we'd have to look through the ordinance to validate what we were asking customers to do, it became a chore. It was in three, four different places in the ordinance. This clarifies it in language. It's all this really does. It doesn't change anything we had been doing before, but it does make it a whole lot clearer to the public and even to the, us looking through it, what it actually states. We're always putting this on our website with picture demonstrations of what it involves. Because people would call and say, "No, that's utilities." No, sorry, it's your service, all the way. So, we'd have to look up the ordinance, and it's in, like I said, very unclear, three, four different places in the ordinance. We wanted to make everything one place, so you'd go a lot easier to understand. The essence of what this is.
The essence, it's from basically the pipe.
It comes from the main, through their connection inside house. They own the complete service. At the main connection, where the water ends. You're still responsible to the meat.
They're not, they're responsible. You put a discussion? I ask you, ordinance thirty-one thirty dash twenty-five, we passed it out.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Weyland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-one thirty dash twenty-five, adopted, shall sign saying in presence of a court, we will test the same. I would continue, especially regarding the deal.
Been here just over two years, two and a half years. When I first got here, I think this would be down to some changes with job descriptions in the office path. And although things go pretty well in the office, communication-wise, and things getting done, one thing I noticed is the amount of time that I spend with the deputy clerk treasurer and the city treasurer was, I mean, it just keeps getting away more and more, especially this time of year, we get the budget, we get the... With budget, it's primarily Katie, but lots of Patty's in there too to discuss, you know, personnel issues and wages. And then just on the HR side of things, which Patty is very much involved in, it's just kind of the constant back and forth with staff in my office. So, to me, the workflows seem to make more sense than they're, to me, which is not an indictment on Clark. Just the way things are structured here, it just, it made more sense. So, we kind of proposed it a while back, and then it went away for a while, and still didn't, it didn't feel like the right, so we brought it back up. Got several discussions with staff, Commissioner Sharp, I've talked about it. So, we brought it back. It's not gonna really alter job descriptions, because I think there's been a lot of that outside of deevaluations, I would be doing deevaluations on it, still with input from staff. But outside of that, I didn't really wanna change what people are doing already, because it's even matched. But that's just the workflow, and that's why we brought it up. So, that's essentially why this is on the agenda.
No, we have had quite a few conversations about it, and it's a more carried in change for additions needed.
I purpose declared only as a discussion item this evening, because I believe the council, I, I encourage you to speak with Randy about, about, of multiple perspectives, a recommendation, and I would bring it back to the council and, and, discussion slash action, that I want you to come here. What also is, going to be your investment in research, with the staff. The action, but the nuances, there's opposing, Commissioner Sharp and I have both had discussions, and also to speak with Randy about this.
I'm sixteen, discussion slash action on the sale of the seventeen O eight boardroom lobby carpet.
Martin Stow, construction facility manager, so, I would like to bring an offer for the purchase of seventeen O eight to the council, but I would say that we're trying one close session for that discussion.
Taking your company offer is not an asking price as a.
It is, it's just contingent. So, I think we need to discuss.
Our current asking price is three sixty?
It's three sixty-eight, I'm afraid.
I move the council on a close session for the protection of public interest specifically on the building area and for the community trust period on the seventeen O eight, eighty-one, eighteen, and one, two, discussion regarding negotiation. And we should be joined by the city administrator, Mary Maynard, and the construction manager, Tom Spiegel.